I'm going to give the invocation and we'll have the pledge of allegiance from council member Dowey.
Please stand. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. Lord, we thank you for the freedom that we have in this country, for all the blessings that you have bestowed on our community. Heavenly Father, we give a special prayer today for our fellow city councilman Jeff Darby, who lost his wife this week. Lord, we just pray for him to have peace, Lord, and understanding and comfort, Lord, for him and for his family. Lord, we pray for wisdom, for our nation, our state, and for us in this council meeting today. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please face the flag and repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Larkin?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby, absent. Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free, absent. Mr. Harvey?
Here.
Okay, we need to approve the minutes of the October 1st, 2019, regular meeting in dispense with the reading.
Some more seconds.
A first and a second. Any comments from the audience? Council, please cast your vote. We need to approve the agenda. No add-ons?
Hold on just a second, council. Yes, sir, there's no add-ons.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Some more?
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay, under ceremonial matters, is Rebecca Bonnabair here to give a?
It's going to be Donna Womack.
Okay, Donna. Welcome, I think you have some guests if you'd like to introduce your?
Thank you. This is, we're here representing the Commission for Women of Bossier, and we do have some guests that we would like to have them stand up and tell you their name and what school they're from, if that's okay?
That'd be great.
Thank you. Lady, start me here.
My name is Jennifer Langston, I'm from Bojor High School. Hello, everyone, my name is Claudia Ock, I'm from Bojor High School.
Ain't nothing better than a B, is it?
Why don't you go before announcing your question?
Hello, my name is Kayja Glenn, I'm from Clay Dillon High School.
I'm Emily Cox, I'm from Benton High School.
I'm Abigail Rutledge, and I attend Benton High School.
And we want to thank you for your support of this program. Thank you so much.
Well, it's good to have you here. Thank you for being here. Tamara Crane is going to give a report on Bossier Council on Aging. Tamara?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here to give y'all our annual report from Bossier Council on Aging in regards to the funding that we get from the city. Y'all, of course, support us with our building, but y'all also give us financial support. So we do cover all of Bossier Parish, but within our systems, we're able to break down specifically what we do into Bossier City residents in our Bossier City area. So we do congregate meals, which is at our Bearcat site, and for the year, our fiscal year was July 1 of 18 through June 30 of 19, we served over 4,200 meals at that site. We also partner oftentimes with folks like the city marshal's office, the sheriffs, the Bossier City Department, and fire departments, and we offer crime prevention. So we had 35 sessions of crime prevention. We have a variety of wellness programs, whether it be exercise aerobics, exercise room that they do, we have the walking path that we utilize. We also have what's called evidence-based programs, where we, this year, have even partnered with LSU Oshner's for Matter of Balance classes. But between all the wellness programs, we offered almost 5,000 units of service to the seniors in Bossier City area. We also offered home-delivered meals, and again, specifically in the Bossier City area, we did over 21,000 home-delivered meals to our Bossier City homebound seniors. We have homemaker service, and that's sometimes a service that's often underutilized because people don't realize it's available. They mostly think of us as that Meals on Wheels program, but our homemakers will actually go into a senior's home who maybe can't perform light housekeeping duties, just to help them maintain that. And in Bossier City, we provided 2,041 seniors with that service. We had things like information and assistance, where people come to us for information, and we did over the course of the year, just over 500 services for that. We also give out a lot of items. Some of y'all may be aware, we have like our fan drive, our blanket drive, that kind of thing, but we also do all kinds of other stuff, and we count that as material aid. A lot of that comes in forms of donations. People donate stuff to us, like in continent supplies, or we, you know, our bingo prizes, laundry detergent, personal care items. But between our two material aid programs, we gave out almost 3,000 items to, again, Bossier City-specific residents. Another program that goes unutilized but is a very valuable program is our caregiver support, and that is when we've identified someone who's a caregiver to a senior to give them relief. And we did over 500 units of that service, to where that caregiver could either just tend to themselves, do their own medical care if they needed to, doctor's appointments, grocery stores, where we go and actually stay with that loved one who maybe can't be left alone. We also do nutrition counseling and education. We have a dietitian that helps us with that, and for Bossier City, we did over 4,000 units. The really fun stuff that a lot of our seniors come to us for is those recreation things. That's the bingo, the arts and crafts, our dances on Thursday nights, and for Bossier City residents, we did over 6,400 units. The other thing that y'all really support us with, and is our most popular, and probably y'all have even seen in the news, has just been recently impacted due to a burglary and vandalism of vehicles, is our transportation program. And that is where we actually transport seniors to medical appointments. We even go to the base once a month. We have two drivers that are cleared for base access. We take them to the grocery store here in Bossier. We utilize Super One and Walmart, and we take them, obviously, to our senior center, but also on outings. And with our transportation, between that, we did almost 11,000 units of transportation with our buses. So that's just kind of a summary of just our Bossier City. We want y'all to see where y'all's dollars are going when y'all support us. One of the really nice things we did, because last year, we were able to get a little extra money from y'all, $10,000, we, in our auditorium, outfitted our auditorium with new chairs for our seniors, because whether they're doing chair aerobics, playing bingo, taking a break from dancing on a Thursday night, they sit in those chairs a lot. So we got new chairs, would love for y'all to come by and try them out. They're comfortable, they really make our auditorium look really nice, so we did that and got that all nice and cohesive and everything. So those are some of the things we do. We also have our calendar on our website, and I think in my email, I even expressed to y'all, if any of y'all ever want to come join us on Meals on Wheels, or anything to see some of those folks that live in those areas, we'd love to have y'all come out and visit with us. And it's raining.
Thank you, Tamara. I appreciate it. Anyone have questions, Tamara? Well, thank you for that report.
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate it.
Your services are critically important to Bossier City.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, committee reports. We'll have Stacy Hernandez, our city finance director, give our monthly financial report. Stacy?
Good afternoon, council. I've distributed the financials for the month ending September 2019. On page one, our revenues by fund were at 110 percent, and the sales tax portion related to the general fund is 103 percent. On page two, our expenses by fund, and we're at 95 percent. On page three is our sales tax, and this is the best we've done all year as far as variance year-to-date. We're just at .3 percent below last year. Page four is our manning report. We have 670 employees compared to 672 last month, and compared to 701 budgeted, which is 31 below budget. Finally, page five is our water and sewer report. For the month, we're 108 percent. Year-to-date, we're at 47 percent. To budget, we're 101, and the rolling 12 months is 114 percent. Do you have any questions?
Why don't we do, I'm sorry, August and September on water?
Um...
You can get that later.
I'll get that for you.
You know what? I'd just like to see, those were the two dry months, weren't they?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, you can just send that to me. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Any other questions, council? Well, thank you for that report.
Thank you.
The numbers look positive. Thank you. Now, we have one more committee report. Mark Hudson, our city engineer, will give his report, monthly project.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Viking Drive is proceeding along as expected. The title work is supposed to be finished by this Friday. That information will be put together with our right-of-way maps, and our appraiser, David Volantine, will commit to visiting with the landowners and acquiring that property. I don't expect any big problems with acquiring the right-of-way on Viking. After that's done, there's some significant utilities to be relocated, AEP, and there's a lot of fiber out there. That'll take some time, but I think the bid date of September 2020 is realistic. Coleman Street, technically, our plans are 60 percent finished, but in reality, they're probably 95. They're down in Baton Rouge right now, being reviewed. It takes Baton Rouge a long time to turn around our plans. We've got some revisions to accommodate a new site plan for the new hospital, but that's no big deal. The bid date there is 2020. I'm going to try to get that moved up, because like I said, our design process is moving along really quickly, and it's just a matter of encouraging our friends in Baton Rouge to review our plans quicker. Innovation Drive, we're absolutely killing it. I was out there Friday, I counted 18 large pieces of equipment, all working. All the water's in the ground, all the gravity sewers in the ground, all the drainage pipe is in the ground. There's still some drainage box culverts to install. Paving should begin within the next week or so, weather permitting. That first section of the Waltra Big B, the US 80 section, is moving along well. The roundabout state now, if you drive by out there in front of the police evidence storage building, you can see the roundabout state, and you can see a bunch of circles, and that's what it's going to look like. So get ready for our first multi-lane roundabout.
Yeah, can we fly drones when we open that up?
We can.
Let's watch the traffic.
It's an excellent idea.
See what happens.
We're going to do that.
Watch all the ricks.
It's a good idea, Councilman Montgomery just had. At the end of this month, we're going to, a critical, important part of this project is a new drainage outfall, a 72-inch steel pipe, to be bored underneath seven tracks at the Kansas City Southern Rail Yard. It's almost 300 feet long. It's to be on grade, and hey, what could go wrong, huh? So I'll be glad when that's finished. The Waltra Big B Carriage Way, the bigger project, we called an audible on our drainage plan. We were planning on putting a gravity line through the levee to, for the drainage. Had several conversations with Vicksburg, the Corps of Engineers. They never told me no, but I just wasn't getting a good feeling they were ever going to tell me yes. And so we made the decision to install a permanent storm pump station. I think it's actually going to be cheaper in the long run, and a very high level of confidence that the Corps will give us a permit to install that type facility. That's pretty common. Swan Lake Road, I-220, our big change order, you recall, we put up a million and a half, and our friends at the parish put up a half a million to give us $2 million. The change order is at $1,950,000. That does not include a signal at Innovation Drive. So I feel like we're headed for one more sit-down with our friends at the parish to kind of sort out exactly how the dollars are going to work. The roof at the arena is complete. I hope it didn't just leak. I see Rebecca walked in. That'll complete all of our big projects. I know that Councilman Montgomery and Councilman Williams have talked to Rebecca about how we're going to move forward, and I think Rebecca's working on a list of additional projects.
I think we should be ready.
Pretty soon. Attentely Ball Field Expansion, the big project, 12 and 1/2 million dollar project, five new fields, all artificial turf, an incredible concession building, new parking. It's going to be, it's going to be state-of-the-art. You're going to be blown away. We've got a one-year construction period, we got a, it bids November the 5th, and I'm looking forward to getting that project underway. And lastly, our driveways, our driveways that connect the Kroger and Walmart parking lots, I've got a good contractor, it's best yet construction, the same guy's building Highway 80 for us. The grand plan is to begin Thursday, weather permitting, and it shouldn't take too long. Council, if you've got any questions, or if I can do anything for you? Yes, sir.
Two things, going back to your analysis of Viking Drive, you said that Mr. Volantine was going to reach out to the landowners. I thought that was Mr. Smith that did that.
You're exactly right. Mr. Smith is our landman. David Volantine will visit with the landowners to commit appraising their property.
As I appreciate it, Mr. Mosley, would you mind?
Sir?
How are we coming on the title work for?
Title work, about 20 of the titles have been done. I think there's 35 total, and those 15, 10 to 15, should be done by the end of the week.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, and I know y'all are coordinating that, before we reach out, we know who owns the land.
Yes, sir. Like Mr. Hudson says, once the title work's done, we're going to get that to Core Engineering. They're going to do the right-of-way maps, and then send that off to DOTD.
Okay, and thank you. And other, what do you estimate the cost of the light at Innovation Drive in Swan Lake?
I would guess it would be 150,000, and I would budget 250,000.
Man, that's a peck of an answer. Thank you.
Well, they, they cost, the lights we had installed a few years ago on Shed Road at Carriage Oaks and at Stockwell, I think those were about 125,000 apiece, but that was a couple of years ago. So you want to plus that up a little bit to be safe.
Maybe you wanted to check with some local contractors that are in that line of business.
Willhite does a lot of that. We can ask them.
Yes, I'm sure they'd be happy to provide you an estimate, if you wouldn't mind getting that to me.
Yes, sir.
And that way, we can know what we're dealing with when we have our meeting.
Yes, sir.
With the parish.
So at Swan Lake Road and I-220, the configuration that would go north there would be four lanes till you get to Innovation Drive.
It's a combination of four and five lanes till you get to Innovation Drive, and then it transitions back down. Yes, sir. And then, and then part of the change order, the parish wants to extend another lane all the way up to Monica Lot Road there.
And then, moving back, go to work there every day, so...
Yes, sir.
That, the exit there, that the interchange of Swan Lake Road and I-220 then is, is now left neck down at a, you know, at a single lane on either side. And I believe I asked about this before, and there may have been some, is that, are we, do we have a effort underway to expand that, or is that?
Yes, sir, that's part of the change order. Right now, there's one through lane. There's one through lane, north and south, underneath the I-220 bridges, and this project includes an additional lane.
Okay, good.
And what's more, it includes the rebuild of the existing lanes, because they're all cracked up. So at the end of the day, we'll have two lanes north and two lanes south, all brand-new concrete underneath the I-220 bridge there.
You know, I think we should, I think I mentioned this before, the, you know, what's happened is since that Swan Lake Road has opened up, the, all of the, all the people that sit in traffic on Airline Drive are now figured out that that's the new, that's the new way to get home, and it's put a lot of pressure on that interchange there, and it won't be long before the lights necessary, because the, I find, you know, just kind of studying that, the, the traffic is backing up on that exit ramp on Swan Lake, on I-220 to get on Swan Lake because of the difficulty to turn there, so.
Parish, part of their 500,000 was to study signals.
Yeah, that, that takes a warrant study, doesn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, good. So that is underway?
Well, I doubt that it's underway.
Yeah, but it's on...
But it's part of the grand plan, yes, sir.
It's going to bubble up to the top here. Yeah, good. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
One last, on the light there at Innovation, as well as any lights that happened, as Mr. Larkin was saying, would you please spec the dark or light poles?
Yes, sir.
Dark green or whatever?
Gray, gray or brown.
I'm glad you brought that up.
Green, dark green.
They'll be green.
I certainly would appreciate that, and that we eliminate, in any future projects, for the record, galvanized poles that turn to rust.
You don't like the kind that rust?
No, I don't. But we can take a poll in the audience here, and we could see who likes rusted poles or nice, classic, dark green poles. You want everybody to raise their hand and see?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Would y'all mind participating? Who likes rusted poles?
It's called weathered steel. They look pretty nice.
Yeah. Who likes dark green poles?
Yeah, Oxford English green.
Thank you all very much for your participation today.
Mark, I've got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
What about the blinky, the blinky yellow lights on Shed Road and the, and the signs? The inner lane's blocked off going west. Been like that for a week or so. Of course, I stopped by the other night, was looking around, it's like, why are these things here? There's no hole, there's no digging, they're just...
I know there was one more concrete patch made, but that was last week. I haven't seen any barricades.
Well, as of Sunday night, about 12 o'clock, they were still there.
I'll have to check on that for you, councilman.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark?
Well, it'd be your time.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, councilman.
Fellas, if you'd let the minutes reflect that Jeff Ray has entered the room at 3:15.
Yes, sir.
Late, too.
Want to thank the audience for their participation. You didn't know you would have such an integral role to play today, playing in the city. Let's see, we'll move on to unfinished business. Can I get a motion to combine items one through nineteen?
I'm fixing to do that. You've got to read it first, though.
No.
Adopt an ordinance to adopt the general fund budget for 2020.
I'd like to make that motion, we combine items one through 19.
Second. So we have a motion and a second to combine all of these multiple budgets. Are there any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Adopt 2020 operating in capital budgets as presented.
Does it move?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council?
I just wanted to, I wanted to thank Ms. Fernandez and the administration and all the department heads for their hard work on this year's budget. There's a, you know, it goes so fast here, but believe me, there was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears put into that, and a lot of hard work, and for you, for those out in TV land and those here in the audience, I'd like to thank the administration, and again, all the department heads, as well as the council, for presenting a balanced budget, which means we're living within our means, and we're not raising taxes, we're not raising fees. So hats off to the mayor and everyone else that were part of the team to put this together. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I echo that. It has been a very smooth process. Thank you for your work, yeah.
Maybe we can get the flags, man. We forgot the flags.
So we have a motion. Motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote. Okay, so that's going to move us...
It's not showing.
Try it again. Did it not show?
We need Jeff.
Didn't?
Yep.
It showed, okay, there we go.
Okay. That'll move us down to item 20.
Number 20. Okay. Adopt an ordinance to purchase and repair brush rotors in the wastewater treatment plant division at a cost of $65,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. Final reading.
Some more?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay, we'll move on to new business.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-23, the 2019 asphalt street package number two.
Council, the engineer's estimate for this project is $485,000. The approved budget is $500,000. There was one addendum that revised the bid form and provided a list of the attendees for the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The first bid is from Benton and Brown LLC. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for $584,951.05. And this is the last bid for this project. It's from Ernest Contractors LLC. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for $530,424.50. Ask that you approve the reading of these bids, and although it is less than budget, we can still accept it now and then work with a change order.
All right.
Does it move?
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions from the audience? Comments from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P-19-24, Birdwell Lane Reconstruction.
Council, the engineer's estimate for this job is $165,000. The approved budget is $200,000 to come from the 1991 Streets and Drainage Capital Projects. There are no addendums. The first bid is from A&amp;H Building and Construction LLC. The bid bond is included. The bid is for $156,999.30. The next bid is from CW, CWW Contractors, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $273,000 even. The next bid is from FJ Burnell, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $162,592. The next bid is from James R. Martin Building and Remodeling LLC. The bid bond is included. It's for $160,000. The last bid is from RVP Construction, Inc. The bid bond is included. It's for $179,777. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Does it move?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the audience? Council? Gary, did you want to?
Council, none of these projects have an approved budget per an ordinance or anything. I set those budgets up based on the money that we had to spend, and those were my target numbers, so...
We should have had the money.
They both come out of the asphalt, street, street fund, and they're, and so they both total less than 700,000 on them, on the... on the, on the two bids, so we're in good shape. They both come from the same fund. There's no ordinance, ordinance budget.
The funds were approved in his capital budget. They were approved.
So we're in good shape on them.
Okay. So we have a first and a second. Uh, no comments from the audience. Any other questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. And we have one more.
Witness opening of sealed bids for bid number P one nine dash two two, Sewer Sub Basin B C twenty rehabilitation project.
Council, the engineer's estimate and the budget for this project is six hundred thousand dollars, provided by the 2016 L D E Q loan. There was one addendum that changed specs, revised the bid form, made changes to drawings, provided questions and answers and a list of the attendees to the mandatory pre-bid meeting. The first bid is from A S B Utility Construction LLC. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for four hundred one thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars. Four zero one, four five five. The next bid is from J Bar Corporation. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for four hundred fifty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-five dollars and thirty cents. Four five one, eight seven five, point three zero. The next bid is from PM Construction and Rehab LLC. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for four hundred ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Four nine nine, eight five zero. The next bid is from Portland Utilities Construction Company LLC. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for five hundred eighty-one thousand, ninety dollars. Five eight one, zero nine zero. The next bid is from Pulley Construction. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for five hundred eighteen thousand dollars. Five one eight, zero zero zero. And the last bid is from Yorwick Construction Company, Inc. The bid bond is included. They acknowledged the addendum. It's for eight hundred thousand, three hundred ten dollars. Eight zero zero, three one zero. Ask that you accept the reading of these bids.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Okay, we'll move on to number four.
Hearing of appeal for Mackenzie Gordano, thirteen forty-eight Shamrock Street, Bossier City, Louisiana, seven eleven twelve, for violation of city ordinance section fourteen, vicious and dangerous dog.
Good afternoon, council. Our officer was called out September the fourteenth, approximately four twenty, to thirteen forty-five Michael Street, called by the police. When we showed up, the fire department's already came and gone. They noticed the injuries, bandaged the girl up. She was inside getting ready. She was an eight-year-old little girl. We got called for the dog bite. Dog bit an eight-year-old little girl. The father didn't know exactly what happened. The kids were outside playing. There was another little boy with her. She, he gave us the description of the dog, told us where he lived at. So our officer and the policeman went to that address and they had a dog that matched the description. We asked the owner what happened. They didn't really know exactly what happened as far as the dog biting the little girl. They came up later and told me that the kids were playing in their yard. I'd been playing on their car. They didn't want the kids in the yard. They came out, told them to leave, went back in. Then the door didn't latch all the way. The dog came out and that's when the dog bit the little girl. The story we got from the father after talking to the daughter was that the kids were playing. The dog got out. The kids jumped on the car to get away from the dog and the dog bit the little girl. That's pretty much the story we got. The dog did bite the little girl. She went to the, as you can see in the pictures, the pictures were a few weeks later. They were kind of healed already, but you did see the puncture wound and the scratches, which were described in the patient care report that I gave to you from the fire department. So what we did, we investigated and we determined that the dog did bite the little girl and we deemed it dangerous. They came in, the, Mr. Gordano came in and talked to me about what was going on. And I told them the, about the declaration, how it proceeded and what the actual definition of the dangerous dog ordinance is. And it states once again, dangerous dog shall mean any dog that when unprovoked shall be deemed dangerous, deemed a dangerous dog if it, number one, bites, injures or inflicts a bite on a human or domestic animal either upon public property or those areas of private property that are unfenced and normally accessible to the public. Well, this happened in their front yard. It's unfenced. So that's why we went ahead and had to deem the dog dangerous. It's not something that we like to do. We wish it didn't happen. But the simple fact is, no matter what story you believe, the dog came out and bit this little girl.
If you'd state your name and your address, please.
Hi, thank you for hearing me. My name is Mackenzie Gordano and I live at thirteen forty-eight Shamrock Street in Bossier City. And thank you very much for speaking and telling us the law. I'm here on behalf of Kito. Yes, that did happen. He did get out of the door. But I do want to add something to that story that was not in our superintendent's story. They were already on my car playing in my yard. They were already playing it with Nerf guns. And that is when Jason Albers, who is my boyfriend, who was visiting me, opened the door to tell them to get off my car. And that was it. Kito, my dog, he saw the gun and he decided to protect. And from what I heard from both police officer and the report, there were only two puncture wounds, no mauling, no going back to attack. He went right across the street to my mother's house. And he has never exhibited this dangerous dog behavior due to the fact that he is a camper at Camp Bow Wow, where he has to pass these interviews anywhere from three to six hours, where he is around trained behavior animal specialists and other dogs, maybe twenty to thirty at a time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Council, do you have any comments? Okay, so, yes, sir.
I'd like to add that whenever I opened up the door to ask...
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason Albers.
Your address?
Address.
Uh, Texas, three eighteen County Road, three oh two three, Carthage, Texas. Whenever I was walking by the door, I noticed that the kids was coming by in the front yard, no problem. A little bit later, looked out there, checked on, hey, honestly, I'd rather kids be playing in the yard with Nerf guns than out doing something they ought not be, you know? But when they start getting on to her car, everything, you know, getting on to our stuff, then I had to say something. And I opened the door and I hauled at them to get off the car. And whenever I did, that's whenever this whole incident took place. It never left our property or anything else, or her property, I'm sorry, never left the property other than after he took the little girl down. He literally took her down, got up, ran across the street, like she said, to her mom's house and sat at the fence, to the gate, to the fence at her backyard. There was nothing else to that. There's, we went over there, put him on a leash. He walked right back over, no issues. We also have three other dogs. We have a small dog, two of which are mixed. And then I have a full-blood German, or a, yeah, a German short-haired pointer. Never been aggressive towards any of them, even whenever I first started coming around. You know, he was kind of standoffish, but he was never aggressive towards me. The dog will go into protective mode. I've seen that. Strange people come up. I've been out of town and she's called saying there's a strange man come up, you know, asking for this, asking for that. He will go to the door and start barking and carrying on. He is protective. And I thank God for that. I, you know, if there's nothing that I can do, then by God, I'm glad he can. But, you know, I just, I'm not understanding why a protective dog should be deemed dangerous. Thank you.
Dale, you want to read that one paragraph again about?
Sure.
A dangerous dog shall mean any dog that when unprovoked shall be deemed dangerous, be deemed a dangerous dog if it, number one, bites, injures or inflict a bite on a human or domestic animal either upon public property or those areas of private property that are unfenced and normally accessible to the public.
So really, in my opinion, is whenever a dog bites a human or even another animal, it's our duty with that ordinance to declare it dangerous. We really have no other... And you know, I'm sure you've been briefed on what you have to do when it's declared dangerous.
Yes, sir.
All the others.
They have complied. They came pay the fees. The dog's in their possession. They're complying to the ordinance so far.
We have the caller on, got the sign up. Like you said, paid all the fees, you know, everything else. As it states in the law, would you say unprovoked? Uh, as it states in there, unprovoked. The dog was provoked. He's had a gun in his face twice. She has told me stories before of whenever she lived in apartments. People, they just don't like the dog and it's a big dog and it's a boxer mix. And he's had a gun in his face twice. He don't like guns. Me personally, I'm a hunter, deer hunter, duck hunter, squirrel, pigs, you name it, I do it. But I'm sure half of y'all do too, you know, but even whenever I pull out my guns, he gets real standoffish towards me. So I have to make sure that I have to clean him or do whatever I have to away from him. He saw them guns, whatever color they were. In protective mode.
It's still our job to protect the public, even though it's unprovoked, in your opinion. You know, any dog that bites an individual, uh, we can't let it go and then get worse on the next time. Maybe it hurt somebody pretty bad, you know, so, Mr. President, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we uphold the dangerous dog declaration by...
Second. Actually, actually, the only motion that's necessary is one to revoke the designation by the supervisor. So unless there's a motion and a second to overcome that, then the classifications stand.
So we don't need a motion?
You don't have to.
We don't have to do anything?
The only, the only opportunity you have is to revoke the designation given by the supervisor.
Because they've already deemed it dangerous.
Right.
There's no motion.
I have one question of animal control. So the, the issue about provocation, which is, is, that is, so their defense, so they say, is, is the, that the dog was provoked. How do you, you, you look at the circumstances, you assess things as, as you see them and then in terms of how you interpret whether or not a animal has been provoked versus unprovoked? How do you, is there, is there an answer to how you arrive at that or you just, I mean, it sounds like an opinionated thing?
It just goes down to our, to our investigation. To be provoked, I would assume the dog would be, you know, kicked at, go up to the fence and shaking their fence and that's more provocation than anything. The dog simply seeing a Nerf gun and feeling that it's provoked that way, we don't feel that that's being provoked.
Your, your, your provocation in your estimation would include something physical?
Sure. Yeah, the dog simply seeing a Nerf gun would not rise to the level of being provoked in our, in our opinion.
Any other questions, council?
Yes, one, please.
Yes, sir.
So I appreciate you bringing that up. And just to further understand that, to determine whether a dog is being provoked or unprovoked, it's purely on personal feeling? Well, I mean, I'm looking for a black and white answer here instead of a, well, it could be this, it could be that. We, we don't really have a definition here. We don't really know, but this is how I feel, so this is what it's gonna be.
Well, it goes down to what we normally, what we normally have is provocation, which would be kicking at a dog, which would be, you know, yelling at it in your face or, you know, messing with the dog in some provocative way.
But there again, where do we classify whether a dog is being provoked or not? Is there some sort of law or, or something in black and white?
Mr. Nathery?
Specifying whether a dog is provoked or not.
Mr. Nathery, would you like to speak?
Yes, sir. Of course, I'm over the Animal Control Division as a part of Public Works. The citizens aren't aware of that, but we have to look at the intent of the people that are committing the action. These, these children obviously have no knowledge that this dog may possibly be, have this problem with guns. And, and it could be that they would have some other toy that even the dog could interpret as a gun that might be something simple and not even that thing. So I don't think we can define, define any intent in the children to provoke the dog. It was just, they were just innocently playing and this thing occurred. So I, I think for, for provocation, you have to find an intent on the party that is accused of this action. As Dale says, kicking a fence, maybe over a period of time, a, a neighbor harassing the animal to the point where it has some contempt for the person. The dog being in a fear situation where he may lash out or be cornered up, things like that, to me, would constitute provocation. And I've looked at numerous cases like this over the years since we passed this ordinance. So I, I think we have to look at the intent of the person that's being accused of provocation.
Also, I think that it's the owner's responsibility to always maintain control of your dog. If it gets out and, you know, runs out and bites somebody, that's, that's your problem.
I can understand that. I'm still looking for a black and white definition of what's provoked and not.
Mr. Irwin, I would recommend that we, we have a duty, and Mr. Hall, please correct me if I'm not stating this correctly, that under our definition and what our people are saying, the dog is dangerous. His next option is if, to argue this argument that he has in the twenty-six judicial court. And if they deem that our ordinance is too vague as far as the definition, then they can overturn what we do today.
Right, Mr. Montgomery. Okay, so if there's not a motion to overturn this hearing, then thank you for coming and...
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for y'all's time.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
I believe they have, they have ten days to be able to appeal this to, correct?
Yeah, you can get with them and let them know the options as far as the twenty-six judicial court. That would be the next step.
Item number five.
Introducing ordinance, amending ordinance number thirty-four of 2019, appropriating additional four hundred thousand dollars from the jail and municipal capital building fund for installation of a concrete flood wall for the police evidence and storage buildings. First reading.
So move?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote. Number six.
Introducing ordinance to replace three hundred and thirty feet of gravity main along Meadowview Drive between Voss and Shed Road at a cost of seventy thousand dollars to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund and authorize the city to enter into a contract with Horseshoe Construction, Inc. for completion of work. First reading.
So move?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Not show up?
We're waiting for it to come up to vote. Okay, stop.
Introducing ordinance to declare certain equipment... Introducing ordinance to declare certain equipment owned by the City of Bossier City a surplus to the city's need and provide for salvage and disposal according to law. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance appropriating $150,000 from the Land Acquisition Fund to complete the acquisition and construction of the Walmart-Kroger Connection Project. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance appropriating $280,000 from the 2014 utility bond to perform a pilot study to determine if nanofiltration can eliminate enough organics from Bossier City water to use free chlorine in lieu of chloramines. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Introducing ordinance repealing and reenacting Chapter 18 Buildings and Building Regulations. First reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring of six fire department employees to replace positions due to retirement, termination, and resignation. First and final reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Counsel, any questions? Please cast your vote.
Adopt a resolution to establish a part-time worker for the Solid Waste Division in Public Works to work Saturdays at the Solid Waste drop-off station. First and final reading.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Approved reappointment of Michael Vercher as a representative for the Personnel Board with required referral letter from Bossier Parish Community College. Appointment effective September 4th, 2019, and expires September 4th, 2022.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And when it comes up, we can... Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approved recommendation to appoint Maria Strater as a Commissioner of the Board of Commissioners for the Bossier Housing Authority. Appointment effective October 15th, 2019, and expires October 18th, 2024.
So I'll move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approved report of change order number three for the Northeast Wastewater Treatment Plant Improvement Project for an increase of $110,882.32. Total cost of contract with change order is $12,925,227.26.
So I'll move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Audience?
Do you have a question? No. I don't think we need an audience input on a change order.
I think you have to do it all on everyone.
You do it on a change order.
We do need it, Audrey.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Any comments from the audience?
Don't try to change the rules, okay?
We went over this.
I made a mistake.
And any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
I don't want them taking you to jail, Mr. President.
Appreciate that, Mr. Montgomery.
Come on. Maybe you should let them do it, huh?
Then I'd have to step in early, so...
Approved report of change order number one for the Bossier Water Treatment Plant Ozone Improvements Project for an increase of $2,900, and increase, and an increase in 103 calendar days. Total cost of contract with change order, $130,900.
So I'll move.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Any questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Approved parade permit fee waiver for Heroes Run, October 26, 2019.
So I'll move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any comments from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote. All right, that concludes our agenda for today. Does anyone have any announcements?
We have no meeting next week.
Mary, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No meeting next week.
What's that?
No meeting next week.
Oh, we do not have a meeting next week.
That's right.
Let's get next week.
Joanne, where are you at? Joanne? Mark, would you raise your hand? Mark, if you might, sit in Joanne after the meeting. I'll go back there with you. Would you do that? Yeah, Mark.
Okay, any other?